Okay, I'm gonna call the order to this meeting of March 29, 2018, Nashua City Planning Board. Mr. Secretary, can you call the roll?
Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Mayor's Rep., present. Scott LeClaire.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber, Alderman David Tenza, Alderman Mary Ann Malitzie-Golia, Steve Ducran.
Present.
Dan Kelly, David Robbins.
Present.
Jerry Rapucci.
Here.
Maggie Harper. That's it.
Okay, thanks. So we have all regular members, so everybody will be participating.
Also, the planning staff, Roger Houston, and Scott Maffei, and Linda Panty, McGee.
All here.
Okay, thank you.
I think.
So we also have from our packet, the minutes from the March 8, 2018, meeting. Anybody had a chance to take a look at those and wanna make a motion regarding whether they're okay as is or need to be amended?
I wasn't here, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion from Mr. Varley to approve the minutes as written. Any second on it?
We have a second.
Second by Mr. Ducran. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstentions? Is it two of them? Got that, Mike?
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions, yeah.
Jerry and David.
So a motion passes. Okay, Communications, Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and... The planning board, you turned your packet off quickly, those two items. You have an amended planning board agenda. So these are the case numbering on the second page, Crimson Properties Case 2 and Sequel's Case Number 3. You have some elevations pertaining to Case Number 3, which is a sequel development for your information, elevations and some buildings that look, will look... You also have a preliminary agenda to determine regional impact, which is more up to date. And then each of the board members got their very own copy of FY 2019 Capital Improvements Plan that the board approved at your last meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Reports of committee and liaison, I don't think we have any members here for that. They're both out, so we'll skip beyond that. All right, now I'm now gonna go ahead into the executive session. I'm gonna read the procedure of the meeting for the folks in the audience here. So after each legal notice of conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision is read, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for, to take jurisdiction. At that time, I'll start the public hearing, and we'll, and we'll bring up the applicant or their representative. They'll be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations. And the board will have an opportunity to ask some relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. The way that I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna first ask for anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned for the plan to speak or come forward. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record into the microphone. This is your time to express any concerns or ask any questions of the applicant regarding the plan. Next, I'm gonna ask for testimony from folks that might be in favor of the plan under the same sort of conditions. The board will then go ahead and ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then come back up and will be given a rebuttal period where they can respond to any of the concerns that may have been raised during the public testimony. At that time, if there are any additional concerns from the public, what I'm gonna ask is that you folks get together and have, elect sort of one representative that comes forward to ask any final questions. And then the applicant will go ahead and address those as well. After this, these sessions have been completed, I'll go ahead and bring the public hearing to an end, and then the board will move into our public meeting where we go ahead and deliberate and vote on the application before us. A couple of just housekeeping items, I ask that you keep your remarks to the subject at hand, not repeat things that have already been said. We wanna be fair to everyone, make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all of our applicable approval criteria established in our Nashua Revised Ordinance, ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans and subdivision plans. Thank everybody for their interest and courteous attention, and if you have any cellphones at this time, if you can, you know, put 'em on vibrate and turn 'em off, I would appreciate it. Thanks. So I'm gonna go ahead and down through the list here. So old business, conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, Case Number 1, Diane Gimber and Bishop Real Estate Management, Inc., that, that item is tabled to an uncertain future date. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, Case Number 2, Crimson Properties LLC, owner, it's an application and acceptance of a proposed consolidation of Nashua Lot D-69 with Hollis, Lot 10-16 and subdivide, they combine lots into two lots, it's two lots. It's located at 1095 West Hollis Street, Zoned R-30, Suburban Residence Ward 5. Does anybody got a chance on the board to look at that application and wanna make a motion either way, whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
I'll sort of move that.
We have a motion to take jurisdiction for Mr. Rapucci. Does we have a second on it?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Robbins, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstentions? No. Okay, motion passes? Okay, do we have somebody from the applicant here? Go ahead and come on up and present your application.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mike Plo from the Lance of Air with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Here tonight to represent Crimson Properties LLC, who owns land on the Nashua-Hollis border known as Tax Map Parcel 1016, which is located in Hollis, and Tax Map D-69, which is located in Nashua at 1095 West Hollis Street. The purpose of the application is to consolidate Parcel 1016 and 1069 into one, and then subsequently subdivide them into two new lots. The two new lots will be treated as Hollis backlots. Being that the property straddles the municipal line, is governed by New Hampshire RSA 674-53, which allows the owner of such land to treat the land as a single lot for planning purposes. In accordance with RSA 674-53, the Hollis regulations will apply to the new lots as a whole, being that the structures will be placed in Hollis. With that said, we did receive Hollis Planning Board approval on September 19, 2007, and the conditions of approval have been submitted to the Planning Department. The property is located in the recreational R-zone in Hollis, and both lots meet all dimensional criteria for reduced frontage lots. Minimum lot size is four acres with 20 feet of frontage. The proposed new lot 1016 will contain 4.13 acres with 105 feet of frontage. The proposed lot 1016 will contain four acres with 127 feet of frontage. And the existing barn that is an accessory structure on Lot 1016-1 will remain as is pre-existing. Both lots have existing curb cuts on West Hollis Street, and access will be through the Nashua portion of the lots to the proposed building sites located on the Hollis side. Emergency 911 addresses have been recommended by the Fire Marshal, Adam Puleo, and they have, they are, number 1095 will be for Lot 1016-1, and 1099 for Lot 1016. These numbers have also been verified by Hollis DPW. We are requesting two waivers with this application. The first waiver is Section 190-282-B-9, which requires physical features to be located within 1,000 feet of the site. And the second waiver is 190-212-D-2, which allows for a financial contribution to be made to the construction of a new sidewalk via contribution. With that, what I wanted to do was just kinda show you over on the board here. Presently today, the existing conditions, the limit of the blue line that runs around here, 1016 is westerly of the town line right here, the town line runs right through here, Hollis is on this side, Nashua's on this side. Lot 1016 is the Hollis side, 1069 is the Nashua side. What we're proposing is to consolidate these two lots together, and then re-subdivide with 1016 going from the orange line right here down to the frontage on West Hollis Street and back, containing 4.13 acres. And the other lot would be four acres, which is 1016-1, along the orange line again to West Hollis Street, and then back. And with that, I'll certainly entertain any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thanks. Questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Just from my education, stipulation number one, the request for a waiver which requires physical features on-site within 1,000 feet of the subdivision, what do they mean by that, physical features on-site?
Well, we've located all the physical features on-site. Sorry. And we've also located physical features within 250 feet of the site, and I believe what that is asking for is physical features within 1,000 feet of the site.
What's a physical feature?
Oh, like a, a building, a driveway, you know, anything that's locatable, you know, rock out, crops, things like that.
So these physical features cannot be within 1,000 feet of this site?
No, it's a question of what's shown on the plan.
Oh, okay.
The limits of the plan.
Just trying to understand the terminology. Thank you.
Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got a question on the second waiver request for the payment of $11,650 in lieu of having a sidewalk or putting a sidewalk in. What, what frontage does that cover, and how many feet?
It was the total frontage, 232.01 feet of frontage at a rate of $50 per linio foot.
Okay. So if, if my, my math is right, and my math is often suspect, that's just the frontage on West Hollis Street in Nashua, which is about, you said 231 feet? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
So just to clarify, so the Nashua part of this is, is in effect sort of the, just the driveways, the access to West Hollis from the Hollis sites?
It's access to get to the Hollis sites, correct?
Yeah, okay. What about utilities? Can you explain how the utilities are being dealt with?
It was gonna be underground electric, on-site propane.
Okay.
There's, water is gonna be private well, and septic will be private septic systems.
Okay, and, but the only utilities that are coming off of the Nashua side are electric? Or they... I guess I'm trying to understand what utilities are being supported from Nashua. I mean, obviously not the on-site propane or wells, but... Grab, just grab the mic, yeah? Thanks.
Sorry. So it's underground electric, and we have the option for Penn and Chuck water.
Okay, so you do have that as well, coming off of West Hollis?
Correct.
All right. And then sep, but septic and gas, so that's all on-site?
On-site.
And on the Hollis side? Other questions? Mr. Robbins?
How, how are these homes gonna be serviced as far as police, fire, and school bus pickup?
I know that the street addresses are for Nashua, so I'm assuming that it would be serviced through Nashua Fire, but I don't know that for sure.
All right, so if I, if I understand, we have a situation where Nashua Police or Fire may be called for, just following what you were saying, may be called for something that's occurring in Hollis, is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
I can certainly check.
And that, always interested in how school bus pickups work on this, because children gonna be going to, if there are children, Hollis schools or Nashua schools?
Again, I would assume it would be Hollis schools, that the buildings are in Hollis.
Okay, all right. Well, I, thank you very much.
Mr. Rapucci, any comment?
Yeah, I could, I could just tell you that the 911 system is pretty, pretty sophisticated. So when communities have access through one town to property or residences in another town, that would be flagged in the 911 system, and both towns would know it too. So when, if a 911 call were to come in at that location, 911 would be aware that the physical residences are in Hollis, but the street address is in Nashua. And plus, both agencies would be aware of it too. Because it's kind of unusual, you know? Even in a city this size, there's only gonna be a few of them that are like that. So the, it's something that's managed through the software and 911 and through, in the communities, and it's, it's handled pretty well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Peterson?
Getting back to the utilities, how will these two houses get their TV and internet
Well, assuming that they're not having satellite, I would imagine, or I would, I would assume that they would go through Nashua as well.
So they run cable from the road after the...
Right, up through the electric.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
Any else?
Couple questions.
Mr. Ducran?
The fact that the, an accessory building will remain in Nashua, any regulations, Nashua regulations have to apply?
The Nashua regulations apply because, but it's, it's pre-existing, it's a pre-existing structure.
Like it's grandfathered.
Grandfathered, right.
Okay. I was looking a little bit more, closer to the plan, and I noticed our GIS, you know, you can find on internet, for the right-of-way line on that side of the street is different from your surveyed line. Did you see that difference?
We did see that was different, but we, we had a survey that we tied into that defined that line already, so...
So you're saying our GIS has an error?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to do, there was an old, there was an old right-of-way there at one time.
And that's discontinued?
I believe so, yes.
All right, all right. I guess we'll have to correct that. So the driveway, right in that location, the existing driveway has a widened section apparently for turnaround within the right-of-way, and I think within the corrected right-of-way. Is that necessary?
I think that was there from, from prior, when it used to be a road going through there, and it's just, it's just remained there ever since. But is, is it needed, is that...
Yeah, that's my question, because it's, the fact that it's within the right-of-way, you know, puts some burden on Nashua's public works to, to maybe maintain, I don't know. But if it's not necessary, can it be removed?
Yes, it can be removed.
Can, okay. That's all, thank you.
All right. Anybody else, questions for the applicant?
No.
No? Okay. All right, at this time, I'd ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition or concern to the plan. Seeing none, I would ask, is there anybody wishing to come and speak in favor of the Again, seeing none. Any final questions on the board for the applicant or staff while the public hearing is open? No? Okay. All right, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and move into the public meeting, so... So, you know, we basically have some subdivision going on, most of the plan is in Hollis, obviously. We've talked about, a little bit about, you know, utilities, sidewalks, a waiver of the existing conditions to sort of widen the plan view, if you will. And Mr. Ducran's talked a little bit about potentially removing, what is it, Steve, it's like a turnaround that's there right now, but in the right way.
Go ahead.
And which lot is that on, Steve? Is that 16-1 or 16...
Which, um...
It's for...
The existing driveway, 16-1, right?
16-1, right?
16-1, yes.
Does anybody have any points they wanna discuss?
Mr. Ducran asked him about the GIS and that we'd have to correct that, so should that be part of the stipulation that the documentation reflect the proper GIS coordinates?
I think he's talking about the city's GIS is off, but the city would do the correcting on that, isn't it?
So how will they know to go do that? Should we put that in writing or let it go?
Stipulation number six.
Yeah?
Prior to the chair signing the plan, they're gonna, we're gonna get an electronic copy of the plan, and that's gonna go down to our GIS person.
And they'll look at it at that point.
They'll be able to update it, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Steve's off the hook.
Great.
Anything else? No? Anybody have any concerns with the waivers being requested?
We're getting our full sidewalk contribution, so...
Yeah, the plan, I, I'm not sure that things more than 1,000 feet away from these sites are gonna be material for us to make a decision at the point, on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Varley, come in.
I'll make a motion to approve new business number two, subdivision plan, Crimson Properties That motion that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO, Section 190-138G, with a total of eight stipulations. The first two being waiver requests, and both of those waivers to be granted so that the stipulations would re, is granted, it will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations three through eight as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve as discussed by Mr. Varley. The second for Mr. Rapucci, any discussion? I guess the only discussion I might have is, Steve, do you think that the removal of the turnaround portion on Lot 10-16-1 there is, could be a stipulation?
It can be handled with the correction in the plans. Can have it handled that way, or...
Yeah.
But we can make a stipulation to make sure it happens.
Whatever you think is the right thing, I mean, you can, you can amend it with that if you think that's...
Yeah, let's add it so that it doesn't get forgotten.
Could I, I don't understand it. Can, can you just explain to me what we're, what it's, what we're talking about?
Steve, do you wanna point to it? You can hold the microphone up.
I can show you on the plan. So the current driveway is up here, and you can see this piece that's actually marked out here, it's a turnaround, and it's within the public right-of-way, which is this blue line. That's no longer needed, because their driveway now is just to get from here to their barn and to their new home. That turnaround is no longer needed, and it's within the public right-of-way.
Make sense?
Thank you. Sure. So the idea would be to add a stipulation that, that they'd correct the plans to remove the turnaround?
Yeah, that'd be adequate.
Will that be number nine? Do you wanna, do you wanna just add, amend?
Sure, I'll just, I'll amend my motion, so that there are a total of nine stipulations. Again, the first two being waiver requests, both reading is granted, will not be contrary. Three through eight is written in the staff report, and a new stipulation nine indicating that prior to the chair signing the plan, the plan will be corrected to remove the existing driveway turnaround that is currently in the right-of-way.
Okay, so we have an amended plan. Oh, second for that, Mr. Rapucci. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Any abstentions? Nope. Motion passes, so it's six-zero. Okay, next we have, new business site plan, Case Number 3, Sequel Development Management, Inc., owner, application acceptance of proposed consolidation of four lots into one and construct a two-story residential building housing six units along with associated site improvements. Property is located at 2A, 2B Stevens Ave, 4 through 6 Stevens Ave, 1 through 3 Everett Street, and 5 through 7 Everett Street. Sheet 85, lots 81, 83, 87, and 88, Zoned RC, Ward 4. Can I have a motion, or that this plan is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
So I have a motion to take jurisdiction from Mr. Robbins. Any second? Second by Mr. Rapucci. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? None? No abstentions, so six-zero, motion passes. All right, so applicant? You're on.
Good evening, folks. My name is Peter Dollar, I'm the President of Sequel Development and Management, Inc. Thank you for hearing our case tonight. On June 27, 2017, the zoning board... On June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, the zoning board approved our project to build a three-story apartment building, and I do want to make sure we correct that. Some of our paperwork had said condominium. This is an apartment building, so it'll be a six-unit apartment building, three stories tall. The only one stipulation that was included in the zoning board approval was that we would construct a fence along the... Between, along the border to eight and ten Stevens Street and along the Stevens Street side. Our building will face the Everett Street side, so the Stevens Street side would be the back of our building, and that will be protected by a fence. This is actually kind of a very advantageous situation. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but the community development division headed by Sarah Marshant has obtained about a half million dollar, a little over a half million dollar grant from the federal government, and they're gonna be tying Mines Falls Park with the rail trail. And Everett Street is gonna be the corner that's gonna tie those two together. So coming off of the Mines Fall, coming off of the rail trail at the end of Everett Street will be a ramp that'll come down onto Everett Street. Everett Street's gonna be restriped to have a bicycle pedestrian lane in it. Then there's gonna be a raised crosswalk crossing Ledge Street to a brand-new footbridge that will cross over to Mines Falls. So it just, fortunately, at the same time, we bought this lot, so our constructing this building is gonna just greatly improve this whole corner. A few years ago, the city did a great job buying the land and developing Levine Park, which is just less than a block away. And now this, which has been a vacant lot for many years, and the previous owner came in and paved it, and the building folks have been chasing him because he put no drainage in and didn't pull any permits. So we let them know that we're working on this development, and we'll remove all that pavement and bring it up to snuff, but it's gonna greatly enhance this whole corner and improve it. And the other beauty is there were no monies granted for lighting on Everett Street, so there was no lighting proposal going with the community development grant to improve Everett Street. So by us developing this building, developing our parking lot, we'll be providing a lot of lighting that'll provide security and allow safer passage from the rail trail to Mines Falls after hours. So I've, I've hit on a few things already. Currently, we have four vacant lots. We'll be consolidating into one lot. There is no lighting. We will be improving the lighting along that area. And our building will contain six apartments. There will be nine parking spaces, one point five spaces per unit. We will meet all drainage codes. My lower set of plans shows the infiltration basins. We have four different infiltration basins, two capture all the rainwater and the water that hits around the building, put some underground where they'll perk away. And then two infiltration basins catch the water that's in the parking lot and the paved areas. And same process, the water goes into the infiltration basins and perks underground. I want to be very clear, we don't have any detention basins, we don't have any ponds of any sort. So all of our land is gonna be flat, it's gonna be grass, and it's gonna be usable. So the people that live there will be able to go out and walk on the property and enjoy the property. It won't be an unusable basin of any sort. The fire department has already signed off on this project. They have, obviously, they have great access from three sides to this building, so they're very happy with... And the building will contain a fire suppression system, so they're very happy with the project. Stormwater mitigation, I just talked briefly about the four infiltration basins. One of the, one of the waivers we are requesting is a sidewalk waiver. Everett Street is less than twenty feet in width. It doesn't have enough width to support a sidewalk. As well, community development is gonna be striping it and putting a bike-walking path in there, so the sidewalk doesn't make any sense. So we've asked for a waiver to donate to the sidewalk contribution fund in lieu of building the sidewalk, just typical fifty-dollar per linear foot. We're about, if memory serves me right, it's about two hundred and eighty linear feet, so it's fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. So we're fully funding what the city would expect us to fund there. The second request for waivers, a traffic impact analysis. This is only a six-unit building in a fairly densely populated area anyways, and it's anticipated only add nine cars to the neighborhood. So that falls below the threshold of requiring a traffic impact study. And then the only other thing I'll touch on very quickly is Robert Cormier was the engineer that reviewed this project for the city. We have a couple of, I would call, housekeeping items to, our engineer needs to wrap up with him just to make sure we've, again, I think it was more word processing issues, but our engineer referred to a couple of different things with different terminology, so we need to clean up a few minor issues. Mr. Cormier also pointed out a possible conflict. We're very fortunate in that we're gonna be able to tie into water, sewer, gas, all on our own property. There's a right-of-way, there's a utility right-of-way that cuts through our property that has adequate utilities for this building, so we'll tie in right in our property. We don't have to go into any of the streets. And then he was concerned that the water and sewer line may cross each other, and they have to have a minimum of a foot and a half between them, or we have to go to a ductile iron pipe. So we've noted that, and if that conflict arises, we'll, we'll deal with it as the engineer asked us to. Other than that, again, it's a three-story apartment building. It will be, it will have one ADA compliant unit in it, so it's what they call an accessible unit. Both the front and back door will be ADA compliant. The lot is extremely level, so there'll just be a very small ramp. We've given you a three-sided view of the building. Again, it's new construction, it's gonna contain radiant floor heat within. It's gonna meet all current building codes, so it'll be a very nice improvement to the property. It'll have proper lighting on all, all three sides for safety and so forth. And the other thing we are doing is we will be replacing the curbing from the corner of Ledge Street with slope granite curb down Everett, around our entire parking lot, and around our little island that separates our parking lot. So that'll all be a slope granite curb, which is always kind of a hot button in the city. So we are doing that as well. So Everett Street's in pretty tough shape now. When we're done, it's gonna look a lot better. The other thing we do with our buildings is we, we pretty heavily landscape them. This building will be irrigated. It will have extensive shrubbery around it. We will do the stockade fence as we committed on Stevens Street. Likely, we'll do a, like a black wrought iron fence along Ledge Street, very similar to what we're doing up on Deerwood Drive. We're building a number of condos up there, and we're using a black fence, black iron fence, which is very attractive and kind of provides a separating line, so we'll do the same thing. And then again, irrigate the whole property, so it'll be green, and it'll really dress up that corner. I guess I'm complete. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Mr. Riley, any other questions?
I just had a couple of questions, both sort of related to the parking. First, what do you anticipate the size of the different units being of the...
They're all the same size. They'll all be just under a thousand square feet, then nine hundred ninety-six square feet.
One-bedroom apartments?
Three-bedroom apartments.
Sorry?
Three-bedroom apartments.
Three-bedroom, okay. And do you know, I don't know off the top of my head, is what would be the closest public parking to this lot?
Good question. I guess you'd go back towards, towards the oval, and there's some public parking there. That would probably be the closest.
Okay. Can you tell me or explain how you're intended to deal with trash?
We're gonna use the city trashy mobile services. We're just gonna use the totes. There'll be one tote for each unit.
Okay.
The city has a cap. I wanna say it's eight or nine units, and so we fall under that, so we'll just use the city totes.
Okay. Do you, do you have a proposed location of where those are gonna be stored on the plan?
No, we have not, we haven't discussed that in any length to date.
All right. Other questions?
I might just have a...
Mr. Peterson?
Sort of an inquiry. If there are six apartments, three bedrooms each, I think you could easily exceed nine cars. What's gonna happen, all the extra cars?
Well, I think you have to look at the demographic of the neighborhood and the demographic of what our likely tendency will be. I've had some discussions with Lisa Cox at Nashville Housing Authority. They're very excited, and they're hopeful that we'll rent a number of our units to some subsidized tenants. It's likely some of them will have no cars, which is the reason they live in the city, or they may only have one car per family. So it's most likely that we'll have several tenants with one or no cars. We'll probably have a few tenants with two cars. But again, the one point five is what the city code calls for, so, you know, we're hitting that number. The demographic would lend us to believe that we're gonna have a few tenants with only one or no cars.
Is parking allowed on that street?
It, there's only one building beyond our building, and then the rail trail hits it. I doubt it's a, I don't know what the exact rule is there. I'm sure if somebody parked in that street, nobody's gonna say anything, but I don't know what the exact rule is. There's no through traffic, very little traffic to the end of the street.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, snowplows.
Yeah.
Garbage truck has to come in and out, that kind of thing.
Mr. Duker?
You mentioned fence installation along Stevens and Ledge. I would ask that we carefully look at side distance obstruction and the placement of those fences.
I agree, I agree. I think we have had some discussion that we would not be able to bring a six-foot stockade all the way down to the edge of Ledge Street because it would obstruct the people pulling out. So I think we'll have to stop that fence well back, and then we could integrate a, you know, a metal fence you can see through or something, something different that still meets the commitment we made to zoning board, but doesn't obstruct lines of view.
Okay. Looking at your utility plan, I noticed that your surveyor didn't pick up the drainage pipes in the street, both Everett and Stevens. Separate stormwater system, drainage system, which is not a problem. I don't think it affects your plan, but what does affect is that you have two catch basins on Everett Street, and one of them, I think, will end up right in the middle of your driveway.
Right, we have two catch basins.
On, in the street itself.
Our...
Not your proposed catch basins, existing catch basins in the street. Now, he did show those basins by themselves without pipes in his existing conditions plan. Might have a copy, I could see that. But then he didn't carry those basins into his proposed site plan. So now I think you ended up with a catch basin right in the middle of your driveway. So I don't know how the grading will affect that and so on, so he has to look at that.
Well, have to look at that, then, okay.
And you may not want a catch basin in the middle of the drive, I don't know.
No, that's not the most opportune way to do it. Thank you. We'll take that into consideration and try and make sure we deal with that.
Right. And the other thing I think you may want to do, to sign your entrance and exit clearly. I don't think your signs are proposed, so you don't have people going the wrong way.
Make it one, yeah, one way. It is, it is angle parking, so it leads you to believe, but I understand what you're saying, so we will put the signs up. That makes good sense, too.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, at this time, I'd ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? If you, if you do come on up and speak your name and address into the microphone.
Hi, my name's Eric Finn. I own the property at twelve and fourteen Stevens Ave. Some concerns, I guess. The last time we had the original meeting on this topic, we discussed the fence going the full length behind from eight to fourteen, not just eight and ten. My concern with that not happening would be the angled parking on that plan shows it pointing right into my house, like directly into my house. I'm gonna have headlights pointing in my house nonstop, and I have a few dogs that will just nonstop go crazy with the headlights. Another concern that I have is when the heavy machinery goes in and starts operating in there, the original owner prior to this property company went in and leveled out the land, and in doing so, half of my foundation fell in, Stonewall Foundation fell in, wound up getting a ton of mice and all this, and I have a concern that that's gonna happen again once the machinery starts moving around out there. I don't know if there is funds put aside for if that happens, that that is an insured coverage option for the people who do own the properties there?
Okay.
Or not? The parking situation that you were talking about, there is no parking on Stevens on the street, or the property on the street behind it. There is no parking. There's signs up that say that. I do have a concern with nine spaces with six units, because though you may think, oh, maybe people won't have cars, chances are they're going to. Anytime there's a birthday party or anything out of the ordinary, you're gonna get overflow parking clogging up Stevens. It already happens now with the people who live there. That's kind of my concern.
Lorette Gagnon, I live at thirteen Stevens Avenue. My concern with this is, as Eric says, is the amount of cars that we'll be coming into. It's nice to say you have space and a half, and that will cover all the cars in the unit. But as Eric said, when it comes to parties and summer activities and people come, where are they going to park? The other thing is that in snow removal, where is the city, are they going to plow like they do on Stevens all the way to the end? Or will they have to plow out of Everett? And for pickup on the, where will the trash barrels be placed? Will they be on the Stevens Ave side, or will they be on the Everett Street side? And when it comes to people visiting and going to the end of Stevens Ave to turn around, or turning around in my driveway, that's my concern as well. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks. Oh, we had a question for you folks on the board.
When you said there's no parking on Stevens and Everett, do you mean overnight or ever?
Any.
I've, I've been stopped bringing groceries in my front door by the Nashville police. Started writing me a ticket, and I said, I'm gonna pull in my driveway. I'm just taking the groceries out of the trunk. And he said redesign, move it now, or you get a ticket.
Because Stevens Ave is posted.
Right. Did you say Stevens and Everett, or just Stevens you're talking about?
Both streets. Everett currently is essentially a one, one-car lane width. There, there's not, I don't know if that's gonna change in this plan, but currently, one car will fit down, so anybody parking...
Can you just talk into the mic just so we can, yeah, thanks.
Currently, it's one car will fit. You couldn't get two cars side by side to pass each other on the road, so if someone was to park, you're going to have an issue if there was a fire or an emergency situation with an ambulance or anything like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The parking, in your opinion, what would ameliorate your concern about having cars and lights going in directly to your house? A barrier of some sort, or?
Just the fencing. If the fencing just ran, like the last meeting, it was agreed that the fence would run around, around their property and then behind Stevens Ave's properties, fully down. I understand what he's saying about pulling out and obscuring you from traffic, so that's not my concern. My concern is just behind my house, that the fence is there, and I'm not having, every time somebody...
So that's not my concern. My concern is just behind my house, that the fence is there, and I'm not having, every time somebody comes in and out, the headlights directly into my windows.
Well, if, if I look at, at, you're, you're at eighty-five, is that right?
Twelve and fourteen.
Twelve, I'm fourteen, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong number here. And I can, I can see based on the plan that, you know, a car would come along Everett and turn in into your ground floor. Would, would a six-foot stockade fence that completely blocked light, would that be enough for you?
I'm not really sure. I'm, I'm assuming the fence would block the light as the car would be pulling in enough. I don't know what other option there would be.
If the fence is your, is your height, you're about six feet.
It probably wouldn't. I mean, it, it would stop some of it, I'm sure, but I'm sure there's still gonna be residual lighting. Is there any way to, to run the parking situation the opposite direction towards Everett Street where there is nothing on the other side? I don't know if that's
I don't know.
a feasible solution to that, or?
Okay.
We can ask.
Yeah, we can ask. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
It's my understanding from the plans that the cars would enter and exit that new parking lot only from the Everett side. There'd be a fence on the Stevens side, so they, they come and go only on the Everett side. It wouldn't be like going into your driveway?
No, no, I'm not concerned about, my driveway is on the Stevens Street side.
Yep, right.
When that gentleman was speaking about what they were doing, I, unless I heard it wrong, I thought he was saying it was only, the fence was only gonna go as far as eight and 10 and stop.
We'll have him clarify for you. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern for the plan? Come on up. And make sure you speak into the mic, just, yeah. Give us your name and address.
My name's Anthony Gagnon, I live at Ste-, on Stevens Ave, thirteen and a half. I believe that the building within seventy-five feet of the wetlands, the canal, I didn't know if that was how far their building is away from that, the wetlands. It says there's no wetlands on their property, but what impact is it gonna have to the canal and stuff like that? There are guidelines, I didn't know if they met them.
We can, again, we can ask.
Okay, that's, that's about it, thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay, if not, I'd ask the applicant, maybe come back up. So we have a few different things to talk about, maybe not, I guess, the least of which are the limits of the fence, you know, headlight visibility, and entering the site potentially from Stevens or Wood Stevens Ave be used, snow removal and trash location and wetlands, like.
Okay.
If you can go down, others if you don't remember them all.
For starters, our building faces Everett Street, and I anticipate there will be zero traffic on Stevens Street. And I apologize if I wasn't clear on the fencing, but one of our, one of the plans, not one of the ones I've hung, but one of the plans shows the fence goes down Stevens Street, comes along the side of eight and 10, and goes along the entire back of our parking lot. We did not bring it back to, to Everett Street, we wanted to leave maximum sto-, snow storage at that end. So the, the back of the gentleman's house will have a six-foot stockade fence there to block the, the lights of the cars. And then, again, we usually do a lot of landscaping, so I anticipate we'll put some shrubbery in there as well to help block it. So again, the six-foot stockade fence will go the length of the parking lot, it'll go along the side of eight and 10, and then it'll go the length of Stevens Street to the point where we'll have to stop it, so there's signs of light for cars pulling, signs of-
So you'll just be backed off from Ledge Street a little bit?
Exactly.
For the site distance, yeah, okay.
And then there is a back door to the building, and it would exit out towards Stevens Street. We can put a gate on that door and kind of minimize traffic, foot traffic coming off Stevens Street. There is no anticipated car traffic on Stevens Street at all, there'd be no reason for our residents to pull down Stevens Street. Even when they're moving in and out, they've got plenty of parking lot room here, they've got a big, a big walkway. It's gonna be an ADA accessible front door, so it's a double door that opens up, so that's the door they're gonna wanna use to, to bring their furniture in and out. So, again, we anticipate no, no traffic there. We'll work with the DPW and we'll set up the barrels so that the dump truck, or the garbage truck picks them up on Everett Street as well. So that's not gonna create any traffic on Stevens Street.
Just to clarify, the fences, so we kinda all understand, including the folks in the audience. So there's really no access from the site to Stevens?
I, I believe the fire department's gonna make us leave a gate.
A gate there, okay.
They're gonna want a gate there, so if there were a fire, they, they could get through the gate to at least access that side of the building. I mean, and there isn't, there isn't, there'll be an exit from the building on that side, which we have to have two, two egresses, obviously, so there'll be an exit on that side. But, again, we can, we can put a gate on it so it minimizes any foot traffic out of there, but with the, with the rail trail connecting to Mines Falls, there's gonna be increased, there's anticipated to be quite a bit of increased traffic on Everett Street, foot traffic, bike traffic, that type of traffic. So Everett Street should become a lot more alive and viable, but again, it really shouldn't affect Stevens Street at all. Last, he also
Go ahead.
talked about the heavy equipment. The, the company that came in and paved this lot did it without permits, did it without any, any upfront work, so I have no idea what they brought in or what they did. The digging is, is very good in these areas, it's all sandy. We do have to pull up all that old asphalt that they put down. We are fully insured and we'll work with our site contractor to mitigate any vibration and problems to the neighboring homes. You know, we're, we're working within the codes and within the permit, permitting process and so forth, so we should hopefully be able to mitigate any real issues. Obviously, there will be an excavator, there will be compacting for, for footings and foundations and parking lot, but, you know, we'll be done within the proper codes and so forth.
Okay. Snow removal, you mentioned it's off the, I'll call it plan left side of the parking lot?
Yeah, this shows snow removal storage at the end of the lot, so our trucks would, would push in and push all down to the end of the lot and pile there. We could also reverse the truck and push some out into our front yard, so we should be able to handle all of our own parking, snow storage onsite without any problem. I am not, I've not seen how the city plows Everett Street, I'm not sure how they do that, so I'm not sure which direction they push. I know Gate City Fence has put a fence all along this side of Everett Street, so there's not a lot of snow storage there. Our front yard will be pretty open, so they'll be able to wing snow up onto the grass during the winter, that won't be a problem, the granite curbing will show them where the edge of the road is. So for private plowing, you know, we'll of course take care of the, our parking lot, our sidewalks, and we'll take care of the sidewalk on Ledge Street. But I really can't speak to how the city plows that street, I'm not familiar.
There was a comment about wetlands, does he, do you?
Canal is across Ledge Street, we're outside of any wetlands codes that I'm aware of, so I think we're sufficiently far from the canal that it's not an issue. Again, we're dealing with all of our stormwater runoff onsite, infiltration basins, we're not gonna be draining anything off of our property onto Ledge Street or out towards the canal, it's all, it all stays contained.
Okay. Board questions for the applicant before I, Mr. Rabucci?
Yeah, the, the gentleman who lives on Stevens Street asked if it was possible that the parking, instead of angling the cars the way they are, so that they, they pull in and the headlights shine right into those properties, is it possible for you to just move your spaces over to the other side and have the cars face the street rather than the houses? I mean, it looks like it's possible, but I don't know.
Yeah. You'd come down to the second entrance, come around.
Well, I think you're pulling into the first entrance, right?
Yeah, currently we're pulling into the first entrance.
So if you were pulling into the first entrance, and instead of the, the cars angling right towards those houses?
Right.
They just angle left towards the street?
Right.
And you leave, is that workable?
I don't know the answer to that, I mean, I could ask our engineer to look at it. It's, it seems like it's possible, I agree with you, Jerry, it seems like it's possible. I, I don't know for certain if there's enough swing room for the first couple of spots. I think you might lose a spot, that's my concern, and we don't wanna lose a spot, obviously.
Yeah, it just, you know, it, it seems like you're within the spec of what you need to do, but I, I do see their point, that would be, even with a stockade fence there, I think headlights pulling in there at night might be disturbing. If there's a way to avoid that,
Yep.
it, it might be a good thing.
It might be, the fence select, type selection is probably an important thing, you know, something that's relatively tight, you know?
Right.
I mean, it's some of the new-
Well, even the engine sound, I mean, even, even the car sound itself, being on that side, could be disturbing.
Sure.
It just, I, I just wanted to ask you look, to, to look at it.
We can certainly take a look at it with our engineer, and if it, if it makes sense and there's still enough swing room, six or one half a dozen of them, to us, it wouldn't make much difference. If it's not possible, then, you know, a good stockade fence with some shrubber to absorb some of the noise as well. It, I mean, currently it's a vacant lot, so no matter what, there's more activity than there is now. I can't change that, but I can, you know, we can mitigate it as much as possible.
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm, I'm thinking about trash, and I'm thinking about, tomorrow is trash day for, for where I live, and I'm gonna take one of these containers and put it out at the end of my driveway. And then next Friday, I'm gonna also add a recycling container, and you have the potential to have twelve containers on, outside your front door there. Where are they gonna be stored? Quite honestly, we hadn't spent a lot of time on trash, so I apologize for that. We have room behind the building, so we could, we could build a little storage locker for, as you say, two, two totes per unit, one for garbage, one for recycling. And then they would just pull them out onto Everett Street once a week. So I, I guess I would say the, if you're looking at the front of the building, the left side of the building, we would probably do something right in there, so they could bring them down the, down the sidewalk and right out into Everett Street. Be right, right in this area. Is it your intent that the, the residents will be doing this for each of their, you know, if I were to live there, I'd have my recycling tote and my garbage tote, and on whatever morning I would come out and put it out somewhere? Correct. Where, where would I be putting it out? Well, again, I have to work with the, the trash, you know, the trash folks and see where they want it. I would think they would want it somewhere right along Everett Street here. Probably see where the, where this building at the end of Everett Street currently puts theirs, I think they put them right out here in the long, so, I mean, we would work with them and determine where they want it. Okay. One of the reasons that I'm, I'm focusing on this is it's pretty tight in there, and the, the, the road is fairly narrow, and we're talking about people turning in. And I know that especially when there's snow, those totes assume, they somehow grow, it seems. And if you have a, a dozen of them out there, you're gonna lose sightlines, you know, people aren't gonna be able to come out, they're not gonna be able to see things, and I, I just raise that issue, and I have a question, would you be opposed if one of the contingencies on this was that the containers be kept in an enclosure? I don't think we'd be opposed to that, and I was, as I was mulling over as you were asking the questions, I was thinking we would probably build something to keep it organized and keep it within. We would certainly label each one, so it's, it's identified which unit it belongs to. We do have a number of apartments downtown, and each of the residents there is responsible for and does bring out their rubbish each week and bring the tote back. So I think most people are, are used to that exercise, unless they live in a large apartment or condominium community with dumpsters on site. But most people that have totes, you know, are pretty good about bringing them out once a week and making sure they get emptied. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I have two questions. Along those lines of the garbage containers, what about the possibility of putting in a dumpster that was just shared by all the tenants, so it'd just be a small footprint? Could a garbage truck even get to a dumpster if one came down your street?
Well, it is, that's a possibility, certainly you could put a dumpster at the end of the parking lot that we could have picked up. They have made small dumpsters with wheels, so we could put it on the property in the driveway, we'd get out and wheel it out. We have some properties on Harbor Ave that has one of those types of dumpsters. We also have our own maintenance department, so when people put mattresses, couches, chairs, the big items out there, we would be, we'll be around probably once a week checking our property and picking up what's there. So even with the dumpsters, you have to have some additional service, 'cause the residents are not gonna bring the big things to the dump.
However-
So to answer your question, certainly it's a possibility, it could be done.
'Cause prevent twelve containers from being out there every week, maybe a dumpster would work something to consider.
Again, we, we do have properties that we could use totes, and we choose not to because it, it looks nicer, so I, certainly that's, that would be a possibility, and we try to make the best decision.
I have another question. The abutter mentioned, when there was previous work done on that property, that his foundation on his house started to collapse and had infiltration of rodents as a result. Is there some kind of compensation plan for, if, if things go wrong and his foundation falls in again, that he will be made whole over it?
Again, the previous folks did it without permits, and I have no idea what they did, but we'll be using licensed companies, we'll pull permits. Knowing that there's been some issues, we'll probably visit them ahead of time and try and do some recording, much like you would do pre-blasting, see what's there, make sure we don't make any further damage. Everybody's insured, our contractors are insured, we're insured, so if we create a problem, it'll be covered, it'll be taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick question.
Mr. Rabucci?
So just, when we're discussing the trash thing later, you're using city trash, so is it city trash bins, and is the city of Nashville picking up your trash?
That's, that's the way it's designed right now, yes.
So if you were to use a dumpster, then you'd go into a private trash collection?
Correct, we'd have to use a private hauler.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one more thing.
Yeah, Mr. Peterson, hang on a second.
If you pursue the dumpster idea along with rearranging the parking lot so the headlights aren't pointing into their house, that would require a complete rethinking of the parking lot, where to put the dumpster, and where to put the cars, and how to point the cars.
Yep.
One more thing to consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'd ask at this time if there are other questions from the folks in the audience. You can circle around together and just have one person come up with any final questions, or if you're all set, that's fine too. And just state your name and address.
Helen Finn, 14 Stevens Ave.
Thanks.
The whole thing with the dumpster idea, the idea of having it behind our house, we kinda don't like that idea because we do have four dogs.
Sure.
That was the reason for the fence to begin with, is because the people on the other side have teased our dogs so much. So we asked for the fence because of the dogs, the lights, everything else. But to add trash behind there, it'll just wind up, I don't see that being taken care of or smelling that good.
Yeah. Okay, good, it's good to understand that, appreciate it. All right, so any other questions for the applicant or staff from the board before I close the public hearing? No? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing then and move to the public meeting, so. All right, so we've had a few things to talk about. It seems like the fence extent was cleared up. I mean, I think that seemed to me like that was the length of it and where it went was consistent with what we talked about. People had some questions about the parking. My own two cents on the parking is that, you know, I'm not sure they can rearrange the parking up against the street and get turns like properly, but I do think that a properly constructed fence could really help, and certainly with some landscaping as well, to kinda fill in the gaps there.
Yeah, I would just say on the parking, I mean, I think it's fine that, you know, we asked the applicant and agreed that they would take a look at it, but I certainly wouldn't, I mean, personally, I wouldn't be in favor of making any sort of condition.
I'm not sure we can because we don't have the expertise to make the decision on it right now.
I wouldn't want to see that, anything, any stipulation made.
Right.
I just, I was, my point on that was just to raise the awareness and get the dialogue going, and they'll do the best they can. I believe that. I think that they will, so, but I wouldn't want to put any mandate that wasn't going there.
Okay.
Same with the trash, by the way. I mean, I don't, I don't know if they're using city trash collectors. The city doesn't have any kind of requirement on residences where they put their trash cans when, before they put them out. They just have to be on their property, right? So I wouldn't feel comfortable getting into that either. If they were doing private trash collection, maybe it would be different. But for the public trash collection, they'll end up doing it the best way they can, so I wouldn't want to put a restriction on that either.
Other discussions? Mr. Peterson?
There are six apartments, three bedrooms each, potentially 18 people sleeping there every night, and only nine parking spaces available, and one of them is reserved for handicap parking. And the street is only one car wide, you know, so I see how parking would easily become a problem in a scenario like that. Not everybody is, you know, one driver and, you know, per apartment. It could easily be two drivers per apartment, and what do they do?
Yeah, I would agree, but we have quite a bit of downtown apartments that have zero parking, you know? I mean, they're meeting the requirement of the parking, right?
1.5.
The 1.5. You know, we definitely see a lot of apartment complexes in sort of the urban arrangement that don't have any more than what's required, you know?
And there's no street space, hard to even turn around on a one automobile width road. And then like some, like Mr. Robbins stated, snow with the garbage things, potentially 12 garbage bins out there, and not a lot of wiggle room on that road.
And I do think when you're downtown, you just have to have different expectations about parking, you know? And, you know, part of it for me is, well, if there's nine or, for a lot of people, you know, eight parking spots, you know, this is not going to be an apartment that's going to be a good fit for somebody who's got three cars, you know? So I think there's a certain element of self-selection here where, you know, people, if parking is a concern for them, this is probably not going to be an apartment that's going to be high on their list.
A potential tenant or someone who lives there would have to take that into consideration.
Right.
One space, basically, per apartment. Maybe a little more.
Mr. ...
Not to get too technical, but it's got me a little curious. I thought that, this is from years ago, so it might be different, but I thought that handicap parking and conventional parking were actually separate. So having, they have nine spaces, but if one of them is a handicap space, that's extremely limiting, whereas only a handicapped person can park there. So do they really have eight spaces for six units? And maybe that's a question for the planning department.
Yeah, maybe. Roger, can one of you folks clarify that?
I mean, it's something that we went through review with fire department, building department, zoning, and no one, it wasn't brought up that it didn't meet the minimum parking, so.
We do count all spaces.
So the handicapped and the other, just counted together as a number? So that's the answer. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thoughts? Mr. Peterson?
So are we satisfied with the approach to potential damage to the abutter's foundation with the construction? I think we're okay with that, right?
I think we've, the awareness has been raised they're going to use insured. I mean, I think the applicant indicated he'd probably do a pre-construction survey. I mean, frankly, it behooves him to do that because, you know, if he doesn't, you know, it could potentially be sort of liable for anything that happens, right? So, including existing conditions, so we run into that a lot, right? And then the key there is just that there's insured contractors doing the work.
And the applicant did say...
So there is some way to get back at it if there is an issue, yeah? He could probably speak better than that.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't expect to require more than that the contractors be insured. I mean, that's really what the purpose of that liability insurance is, is to say, property liability, you know, is to say, you know, if in the conduct of whatever we're doing, activating or whatnot, you know, we caused damage to someone else, that, you know, insurance is meant to, you know, answer that situation, so.
And the applicant did say he has no idea how the previous contractor did their work, what they did. They may have been careless, so I think we have that covered.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Anybody want to make a motion? I think we've gone through our discussion here.
I still just don't feel fluent in doing the motions yet, so.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Riley?
I would make a motion to approve new business number three, site plan. Owner, 75 Deerwood Drive LLC, located at 1 to 3 and 5 to 7 Everett Street and 2A to 2B and 4 to 6 Stevens Avenue. That motion being to the effect that we've made a determination that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, section 190-146D, with a total of 11 stipulations. The first two stipulations, both being waiver requests, and each of those waiver requests being approved and reading that the waiver is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations three through 11, reading as written in the staff report.
So you have a motion to approve with the 11 stipulations?
I have a comment on that.
Yeah, let's make a second first, and then we can do a discussion. A second by Mr. Rappucci? Discussion, Mr. Peterson?
Didn't we discuss there was going to be garbage bins in an enclosure? Wasn't that one of the potential stipulations?
Son of a gun, there's an amendment about to come.
We did talk about that, yeah.
Yeah, I did, and I mean, I guess I, just as an explanation to my motion, I was not, I didn't, I wasn't trying to ignore that, but I guess I was taking Mr. Rappucci's approach, which is, I think it's, we asked the applicant to consider that. I know, and Mr. Robbins specifically asked if they would say that. I know you did ask if it would add a stipulation. I guess my thought was that I would rely on the applicant to make the determination as to what was the sort of the best arrangement. But I know Mr. Robbins may have different thoughts on that.
I would like to propose an amendment to the motion, and the amendment would add number 12. Builder will provide a gated enclosure for trash recycling container storage. And if it's seconded, I'd like to speak to it and explain why I believe it's appropriate in this situation.
You can just speak because it's not, you're not amending it anyway. He'd amend it, so.
Well, no, he's making a motion.
Oh, okay.
By adding.
Oh, okay. All right, go ahead. Do you second that, Mr. Rappucci? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. And I, the, normally, I would not do something like this, but I'm thinking that we are always concerned about trash containers and making sure that those are enclosed. And in fact, if we're looking at 12 different bins, we're looking at something that has a footprint that's bigger than a, or at least as big as a traditional trash container. We're also looking about things that can go in different directions. This is a fairly tight spot in a lot of ways. And a lot is going to be happening on a road that is 20 feet wide, and it's going to get effectively even narrower because there's going to be a bicycle path going down. So I don't think it's out of, you know, outside of reason to make this request and contingency. I think it would probably happen anyway. Keep things in order, keep things straight, help the people who are in the building know that, yeah, the stuff is here, we'll bring it out, it goes back. And I think this would be one of the small things that we as a committee could do that would be helpful to the people who are abutters, and just a little something for quality of life on that score.
Yeah, I just, the only maybe issue I have with it is the practical logistics of gating 12 bins is a little complicated, right? So you'd have to have gates that are, I don't know, 10 or 12 feet wide, maybe, though. You know, like you said gated, I'm not sure gated is practical. It might just be an alcove, if you will, you know? It's not like a dumpster, so like if your bin is the sixth one in the back corner, you know, how do you get it, get to it with a gate? You'd have to have a gate that literally swings open for six or eight containers. That might be a little complex to even construct.
I would be fine eliminating the word gated.
Yeah, that just might be the only thing I'm thinking. I mean, I think it makes sense to have an enclosure area where they're, so that they're all stored together. Just, I don't know if anybody else has any comments on the gating. It just seems logistically complicated to make that work.
Point well taken, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Peterson?
I think corralling up all the bins doesn't make sense because over the course of the week, each tenant is going to have to go out there and drop their trash in and drop their recycling in. So each apartment needs access to their individual bin, so they're going to have to be like in a row somewhere.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Maybe there's a place that's straight and in a row, and they can line them all up?
Yeah, I think you could, you could make a stipulation to that, that they're, you know, lined up in a central location, you know, corralled or whatever. Does that make sense, Mr. Robbins?
Well, I would, my intent in doing this is to get them out of the way where they're, many, many people where I live either keep their bins right next to their garage or some of them inside their garage. And what I would, my intent in presenting this is to get them into an area that perhaps is out of the way, where they're all together. And then when trash day comes, the folks will just come and wheel them out to the street. And at the end of the day, when they come home from work, they'll wheel them back in there. And they're out of the way, they're contained in one area. Basically, that's it.
All right. You think you can put that into a stipulation?
Well, I think we just, I think it would be, we'd vote on the amendment to the motion, and then vote on the original motion.
Okay. Can we clarify that into a sentence?
Well, I think the builder will provide an enclosure for trash recycling container storage.
Okay. A central enclosure? Does that make sense?
I defer to your wordsmithing, sir.
Okay, builder will provide a central enclosure for trash bin storage. Okay, so we have that motion right now. Do we have a second on that one?
Well, I'll second it.
You already seconded it. Go ahead.
I have no problem with the board doing it, really, but I'm not going to support it. And I'll just say why, because I think, I don't think it's a good idea to make specific rules that go outside of what the general rules are. City doesn't have any such requirement for the trash that gets collected. It doesn't have any requirement on the residents or where they put their trash containers within reason. So I am reluctant, if it's city trash collection, to put such a restriction on them. And one of the main reasons I would be reluctant is because I'm not really sure that they will put all their trash containers in the same spot. I don't, I'm not exactly sure how the building's laid out, but they may have, it may be more desirable for them to have some trash containers on one side of the building for three of the apartments and some on the other. It may be advantageous for them not to have them all together. So I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying it may, would or wouldn't be, but I just can't see putting a restriction blindly on that. That may force them to put the trash containers next to one of their neighbor's houses because that's the only place they can put six. And where, you see what I mean? It seems like we could do a little harm if the applicant is as reasonable as we have every reason to believe they are. They'll do what's best. So I, my personal preference is to leave it that way when we can. So I wouldn't support that, but if the will of the board is to do that, I have no problem, you know? I'm not going to make a stink about it. That's what I have to say on it.
Mr. Chair? I think the city does have some rules as to the placement of trash containers. I don't know if the rules apply to all zones, but what I do know is that those rules are seldom enforced, especially in the city.
Well, they should follow whatever rules exist. I'm not saying give them carte blanche. I'm just saying follow the existing rules.
Right. What I'm saying is that it's, the rules sometimes you can't even apply them because of the limitations of space in so many slots. So that's why I don't think they have enforced those rules.
Right. All right, well, let's just vote on Mr. Robbins' motion. So all those in favor of Mr. Robbins' amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
One, so we have one, two, three, four, five to one. That's okay. So we have the amendment, and then on, I'll vote on the original motion.
Now we're, I think we're now, we're voting on the original motion as amended.
As amended, with the stipulation number 12. Any further discussion on that? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, that motion passes 6-0. All right, thanks. Okay. So the next up is new business site plan number four. And I'm going to go ahead, just for the reference of the board, I'm going to, hey, folks, on new business case number, site plan number four, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself. My engineering is part of the design of this, so I'm going to step down, and I'll come back up during the other business. I'm going to relinquish the chair to Mr. Riley over here.
So this is new business number four, site plan. Owner, BAE Systems, proposal to amend site plan NR 1829 to show the construction of a new parking lot. It's located at 65 Spitbrook Road, Park Industrial and Urban Residence. What ward this is, it doesn't say on the report, but as to new business number four, can I have a motion that this application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction? Motion by Mr. Robbins. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Rappucci. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0.
Good evening, Mr. President. With the latest technology here, getting to the 21st century, and I'm going to try to coordinate the screens with the drawings. What you see on the screens is up on the board. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. Tonight, representing BAE Systems. With me is Ben DeBello. Ben is a facilities engineer at BAE, and he's the project manager for this project. Again, as just read into the record, we're seeking a site plan approval for proposed parking lot addition to their 65 Spitbrook Road site. I will present the facts of the case and then be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I'm sure most of the board members are probably familiar with BAE's campus in the south part of Nashua. We are located off of, really, exit one, south of Spitbrook Road, and east of the Everett Turnpike. And I've outlined the entire BAE campus property here in yellow, okay? And it's an 80-acre site. The majority of the site is owned PI, Park Industrial, and the very northern portion is owned RC Residential. The property itself, as you can see, has a unique shape to it. It is abutted by the FE Everett Turnpike.
FE Everett Turnpike to the west. We've got a couple fingers of frontage along Spitbrook Road here, we've got some commercial properties along Spitbrook. To our east is several multifamily residential projects and there's also a number of commercial sites that really are along the Daniel Webster Highway corridor. To the south is Massachusetts State Line and part of the exit 36 on-ramp system. In case you weren't aware, BAE Systems manufactures a wide, a wide array of high-tech electronic products, both here at exit one, Canal Street, Merrimack, New Hampshire, and then several select sites down in Massachusetts. On the property currently, there are two buildings totaling about 630,000 square feet. The most visible building, one of the more iconic buildings in Nashua, is the U-shaped main headquarters building here. And I say that because you see, I believe, the six to seven story extension up from the ground as you're traveling northbound on the Everett or from Daniel Webster Highway, but it also contains lower stories in around, in the, in a form of a U. There is a smaller second building on the west side of the property here, and it's commonly referred to as the MEC facility, and that's what I'll call it tonight, for Microelectronics Center. Now, access to the campus as we know is off of Spitbrook Road, its main access drive into the site. There's also secondary gated access to the Costco Drive and to Danforth Road to the east. Currently, BAE has about 1,600 employees at this site per day, over primarily the first two shifts. And I think they do a great job by managing their shifts, managing the arrival times and the departure times, so they really don't coincide as best they can with some of the peaks that are occurring out in the roadway. Certainly if you're familiar with Spitbrook Road in the morning, you wouldn't think 2, 1,600 people were arriving there at any one time because it doesn't jam up to that effect, you know, you really don't see that. There are a number of larger parking areas around the main headquarters building for about 1,676 spaces. Now, the area we're going to talk about tonight, this focus area, is just north of the MEC facility, right where my red dot is. It's about a three and a half acre site that's currently wooded with a gentle slope towards that manmade entrance pond that was built along the site entrance. We do have wetlands on the south side of that pond and there's actually a small finger of poorly drained soils that penetrates up into our work area. So what's being proposed, let me just scroll down to... Let's see. Again, that's the main campus, that serves as our master site plan. And I brought a colored plan with me tonight. So on that north part of the MEC facility, what's being proposed is a independent separate designated parking, parking lot for the MEC facility. Currently, the 200 or so occupants of that building have to park in some of the more remote locations on site and it becomes an unreasonable distance during busy times to, to get to the MEC facility. And so BAE is asked to construct this parking space really solely for the employees of that facility. And that is the reason why we're here tonight. The new parking lot includes 164 new spaces, of which eight are new ADA accessible spaces, there's a new drop-off area, there's new sidewalk entrances to the MEC building entrance, and then we're relocating the access drive behind the building that serves as the driveway for the loading facility. Stormwater for the parking lot is being accommodated in a surface detention recharge basin located here, just in the kind of the westerly portion of the parking lot. The plan includes new LED lighting for the parking and the walkways and landscaping as well, and you can see the landscaping on the drawing here on the right where we tried to, you know, work with a lot of plant materials really surrounding the proposed parking lot. And again, if you look at, if you look at the aerial, you'll see that this part of the site, at least the northerly part of the site, is pretty well buffered. The project doesn't impact about 4,000 square feet of that finger projection of wetland into the site, you probably can't see it on the drawing, but there's a poorly drained finger here that's being impacted by the geometry and the layout of the road. We received a favorable recommendation from the National Conservation Commission, we've received a approval from the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a special exception, and we've actually received our New Hampshire Department of Environmental Service Wetland Bureau permit for the wetlands. Mr. Chairman, we have asked for one waiver this evening, it's a common waiver for larger parking lots. Section 19084D asks that we introduce on interior parking lines, interior parking bays, we introduce for every 10 spaces a landscape island. BAE is very focused on, on snow plowing and maintenance of their parking, they have to get these lots cleared for their employees to arrive in the morning. They have asked to waive the construction of those interior islands and those two bays and the trade-off, of course, is that they've, you know, done a pretty darn good job of additional landscaping around the perimeter, some larger green open space areas. Our waiver discusses the fact that this parking lot will not be seen by any public road, it will not be seen by any abutters, so we think it's a, it's a fair request and we think it meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance in that we're offsetting a little 400 square feet of island in the middle here for a lot of green space surrounding the parking. In summary, Mr. Chairman, the parking addition is really needed to provide that separate designated parking lot for the MEC employees. We believe our application and the project conforms to the intent and requirements of the Land Use Code and we respectively seek your approval tonight. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Petropolis, will the, retain the pond that's there now be impacted in any way?
No, not at all. Not at all.
Thank you.
Again, it's a poorly drained, you know, it was, the, the campus was built in the late 60s and there was actually a drainage swale that leads into the pond and over time that drainage swale became a wetland and we're, we're impacting a portion of that existing drainage swale. But we're, I'm going to guess somewhere, well, we can see it right up around your shoulder, sir, the edge of the pond is here, we're probably a good, oh, yeah, we're probably a good 50 feet away with our construction from the edge of the water body.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Petropolis, the, the same pond, so, so the wetland is only the swale, not the pond isn't part of the wetland?
We're not touching any of the pond for impact. It's that transition of the, there's actually a riprap drainage swale that leads down and as it gets closer to the pond, it feathers out and it's a, it's a New England forested wetland is really what it is, so.
Does that pond outlet?
It does. It has a structure, if I may, it, it has a structure at the north end and oddly enough, it runs across the site and then into some of the abutting lots here and then down into Daniel Webster and then, of course, it continues to head east into the, into the Merrimack River.
Your, so, some of the calculations talked about a slight increase and I saw it, it's about an 8% increase in the 100-year storm and you also talked about, but no overall volume increase, we didn't have any volume numbers in the report I got, so I can check that, but with a 100-year storm, there's no danger of it overtopping?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we have a, an increase in rate at the south end of the pond, but, you know, as you heard me say over the years, these big receiving water bodies act as a shock absorber for that increase and if I could do quick calculus, I could probably tell you that that might raise the pond elevation of, you know, a fraction of an inch or such and, but, but that pond will really serve as, as kind of a shock absorber for that, that slight increase. Rapucci?
Yeah, the present building that you have there, do they, is there parking there now against that building or is all the parking that that building presently uses a good distance away?
So there's a circular drop-off in the northeast corner near the MEC facility and it maybe has about 10 parking spaces and that's getting disrupted with this construction, we're providing a new drop-off area, we're providing some motorcycle parking there, we're providing some management parking there, so that really doesn't change much. The main bulk of the, the space is to, is to the north in, in wooded areas. What happens is, as I mentioned, you know, we have 1,600 employees, 1,676 spaces, but being the main manufacturing component of the BAE business here in New Hampshire, there's a lot of traffic from other BAE camp, buildings, Canal Street, for example, and so we're seeing employees will need to come check the manufacturing process and what happens is, oh, I'm sorry, what happens is the, all the parking, the nearest parking adjacent just east of the MEC facility gets eaten up right away because it's relatively close to the headquarters entrance and so the MEC employees have really kind of said to BA, you know, our, our team is parking way off, off campus, we got a long ways to walk through inclement weather, there's good protection, there's good delineated sidewalks and movements, but it's a, it's a great distance and, and it's time that now they had their separate designated space, that's really the reason for the project.
Okay, I'm just thinking it will, this will probably aid greatly for people with disabilities, it's got to be, it's got to be a lot more accessible with this addition than presently exists.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot cleaner layout, yeah, sure. What we have, right along this edge, oh yeah, I can't hit that screen, but right along this edge, we now have a, a good solid bank of ADA accessible spaces, good turning movements, I always oversize the maneuver areas because, you know, the requirements are a certain percentage be inaccessible, I make them all be inaccessible because you never know where they're going to park and so there's, there's, you know, good flat grades to get up and into that entrance, so I do think it, it's an improvement to what's there right now, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Petropolis?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. For the sake of the record, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of the plan? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Staff, if anything, add?
Staff has nothing yet.
Great.
I have a question for staff. Condition of approval number seven, it's, it's different from what we've seen, what's led to having that, that extensive wording?
Okay, I guess the, the idea behind this was to try to make sure everything was built, built to standards and if the wording's off, we can, you know, change that at some point, I mean, just...
I don't know, it just seems a little bit strange. Is it something that we're starting, something new that we're starting to include?
Well, I, I think it's important to, whatever's built to be looked at, I know our building department was concerned that there's going to be a retaining wall and that needs to be looked at.
No, I don't disagree with you Scott, I'm the same, I would know because if it's going to...
It's an Azbel plan, Steve.
If we're going to have this here, we should probably have it.
Yeah, we can...
It's good wording, I'm just asking about it, it came about.
Sure, sure.
It doesn't have anything to do with the, the requirement?
If there's, we're going to have some culverts, we're going to have some bridges, we're going to have some, there's quite a bit of infrastructure there that we want to make sure that it's, it's built up to standards if, and I'm sure it will be, but it, it's just an extra protection, I think, on our part.
I'm, I'm with you in having it, but it just came across as a little bit strange.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
As a follow-up to Steve's question about all that wording for stipulation number seven, there's, you know, all these things are itemized, I thought maybe they ought to put the word drainage in there too, if you're going to really like talk about every aspect of it, that might be an additional word that you want to consider putting in.
Okay. Other, other new infrastructure created as part of the new parking lot construction could be in there, but drainage for emphasis, you could put that in there as well.
Yeah, okay. If no one else has any other questions for the applicant, okay, this concludes the hearing on this application, we'll now take our deliberations into the public meeting. The board does reserve the right to recall any party for further clarification. Anyone have any questions, comments?
It's by the way it is, we vote for the medians as reasonable and...
I agree, I mean particularly, as Jim said, number one, they're providing a lot of landscaping to offset the landscaping that would be required by the, the ordinance, we didn't waive it, but also, I mean, this is a lot that no one except for BAE employees and visitors is going to see, so, so I think that's, I think it's a very reasonable request.
So I'm good with it.
Well, I...
I just have a comment.
Sure.
This plan appears to be well thought through, you know, like they really seem to think about every aspect of it ahead of time.
Okay, I'd be happy to take a motion. Anyone would like to make one?
All right, just tell me where to start again and I'll make a form myself.
Just say, motion approved, and then just go to the next page here and make a determination that it does, and three columns are outlined.
Okay.
And then just, you can just say, stipulations, just make a reference to the waiver that we are granting and then you can just say the rest of it, you can just say as well.
Okay. So for BAE Systems, the proposed amendment to site plan 1829 for a new parking lot at 65 Spitbrook Road, the planning board has made a determination that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in the site plan, NRO 190146D. And as far as the seven conditions go, we, the request for waiver of 190184D is reasonable and we grant that and the rest, the other six conditions are, as written, are fine and make a motion that we approve it.
So motion by Mr. Rapucci is to approve new business number four, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO section 190-146D. With a total of seven stipulations, the first being a waiver request reading is granted, will not be contrary, and two through seven is written in the staff report. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Robbins. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Turn the chair duties back over to Mr. Leclair.
Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda, we have other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. So we have a tentative agenda here in our packet, anybody had a chance to take a look at it and determine if there's anything of regional impact?
I don't believe there is.
All right, is that a motion or?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that there is, there is none.
Case, we have a motion by Mr. Rapucci that there are no proposals of regional impact on a tentative agenda, does we have a second to it?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Barley, any discussion? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Run, okay, so that's 6-0, motion passes. And I think that's all we have at the moment, the only other thing was, did you, Roger, did you want to say in the discussion period just a little bit about this imitation we have?
Well, invitations from the New Hampshire DOT or Department of Transportation, they're starting their preliminary planning for the expansion of the Everett Turnpike north of Nashua, part of that's just north of Nashua wherever road carols down to two lanes, it's my understanding, they'll be bumping that out to three lanes all the way up to Manchester and to improve the traffic flow. I'm not sure about their timeline yet, I guess that will be a question they'll probably address at the meeting. they'll probably address at the meeting. It's an open house, I think, from 5:00 to 7:00 in room 208. And then they're going to be in this room, the auditorium, at 7:00 for a public meeting. And they'll take questions. I think, Steve, you're familiar with this as well.
Yes.
So you might have more information. They might have talked to engineering that you might want to elaborate on. But I hope that they keep the traffic flowing, two lanes in each direction during construction. That's my biggest concern. I don't want to see what happened when they did the highway in Nashua, where we only had one lane of traffic, and we had a lot of backup and a lot of traffic diverting over to Main Street. That was...and I assume that they can probably do that in most locations in this situation.
So what I do know about the project, I mean, it's...some of it's been in the books for a long time. They had, you know, widened Nashua's...the part of Nashua over the '90s, and they had a project to do the rest all the way to Manchester. And they have done bits and pieces along the way, as you've seen. In Bedford, there's a bridge that they did not too long ago. Then there's a bridge in Merrimack. I think it's called the...some kind of... It's not Veterans Bridge, it's something like that, but...
Merrows and Rogers.
So when they've done those individual projects, they had made the bridges wide enough or long enough so that you can accommodate the third lane. But in between now, they have to complete the widening. Something I did last year, I learned at attending a Regional Planning Commission meeting, that they took another look at the project, and they found that the cost that they need to have, the budget that they need to have, has gone by about, you know, 25%, 30%, and they simply don't have the money. So at that point in time, they deferred the project by a couple of years, maybe, even more than a few, and until they raised those funds. And also the fact that they were counting on that proposed toll increase, increase that was supposed to go in last year and got vetoed down. So that probably itself would add a couple more years to the project. We probably learn all about that at the meeting that's coming up. Timeline is not anytime soon.
Yeah. All right. Questions? No? Any other discussion items? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn for Mr. Rapucci. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we adjourn at 8:53.